I'll please stand. Call me in order. I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Sorry for the short delay in there. This Comcast is having a little bit of problem. Rule call, please.
Alderman Violet?
Here.
Alderman Begley?
Here.
Alderman Bassow?
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski? Alderman Key?
Here.
Alderman McGrogan?
Here.
Alderman McGovern?
Here.
Alderman Clifford?
Now it's working, you can see it. All right, we've got a special presentation by Dave DeWare, Hometown Heroes Program. Do you want to, Dave?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak about this. I'm sure people have seen in certain townships banners hanging honoring veterans. And I'm here to talk about this. I just wanted to thank Jack Clifford for allowing me, as we talked about it, he served in the military. So this is a great program. I'm not going to, I'll be quick about it because there's other order of business, but I'll cover pretty much in detail a lot of the questions you may have. So people may know me as Uncle Sam. I do the praise for the last 12 years. And I'm pretty patriotic. So this is an honor to have the opportunity to present this to you. I apologize to the aldermen. I do not have copies for everyone. I have a set here. I'm going to give it to the mayor. And then he can probably make copies for everyone, okay? And you can kind of follow along in each chronological bit. So the Hometown Heroes, there's numerous communities that have it. And it's to honor veterans. And if you see their mayor and on the first sheet, it shows that the banners. I have an example of Oaklawn, okay? Because they just started the program just within the last couple of weeks. Our contact, the contact person that actually makes the banners, which is in the information, his name's Dennis Kramer. And he's in Tinley Park and he handles 16 townships. So they have the system pretty well automated. To actually get a banner, it's $70, okay? And it's a double-sided banner. I'll give you a look at it right here, just as an example. It's 30, which is two and a half feet by 60 inches, which is five feet. So about two and a half by, it's double-sided, knitted, and they do it in their own shop professionally. And that's kind of how it works, okay? They get a picture of the veteran that's suitable, and then it's double-sided. The lifespan of the banners with the weather is about two and a half years, two to two and a half years. I talked with Mary Warner over at Worth, and they've had it for about 10 to 12 years. And then a lot of times, you know, people re-up every two years and then. The most complicated thing with it are the brackets, which I'll kind of get into. And that would be something involved with the public works. And Worth, they have their public works person handle the brackets. Now, because the banner is 30 inches in width, a bracket typically it needs to be 32 inches to hang. And I'm not sure, you know, as far as where the city here of Palis Heights is with brackets, but that would be the, the most expense. $70 for the banner. Oaklawn and some communities, they charge a hunter, and then they'll cover some of the cost, $15 each year. Brackets, depending on where you get them and how much, they can be, you know, they can be costly. I checked Google. You can get them for $60. I'm not exactly sure what the lifespan is. It could be four to five years. Putting them up, taking them down could be an issue. But that's all in the packet. Photos required. We have all branches of service. So you see Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, National Guard. Typically, we'll go to the families and we'll ask them if they want to sponsor it. But we also have opportunities for businesses as well. Myself, I have an organization called the Payless Area Business Association. We started a year ago. We have 320 members. So that can be an option, or other businesses to defer if they want to sponsor the program, if the family doesn't have the means or what have you. So we're able to do that. What I'm proposing here is to use my image as Uncle Sam to promote it. It would be somebody that would be the lead person here in the township. If it duplicates what they do in Worth with the Public Works Department, that would be the person. And then I'm always out marketing businesses myself and Uncle Sam. So that's kind of my proposal here. On here is the, which I gave to the mayor. This is a pamphlet which kind of outlines all the details. There are paper applications, which I have right here, which gives all the information. It specifically asked if, would the applicant like the banner provided to them at the end of the two-year period? Typically, they do. And then if they choose, most of the time they re-up to do the program another two years, which we have on the application. There's the legal mumble jumble here with the release and that. With Worth, they have it as a paper form and then an application. Of course, a lot of this is all automated online as well. And then we have the specifics with cross-mark printing here, which is with the program, and it's all the specifics here. There's 14 items. I'm not going to bother you with all of them, but it goes through all the details. And it's very specific. Like I said, they've been doing the program for a while with Dennis Kramer, and they have it down to a science. The biggest issue with it is going to be brackets as far as going up, suitable sizes, and what the cost effect is. So that's pretty much the program here, guys. Also too, included in the cost is a, yeah, so then we get a little piece here as well. So you can hear it. Kind of goes through the program, and it's very popular right now. It starts typically on Memorial Day, which is coming up Monday, but it can be implemented throughout the year. So check, check out everything. And if you've got any questions, address them. Do you have any questions right now?
Well, David, we've got a banner program already in place that we've had for a number of years on Harlem Avenue. So what I'm going to do is refer to buildings and grounds and have them do some research on it and see if we can complement that some way or see what happens.
Okay, yeah, what the public works do, they did in Oaklawn is they had banners already in place, and they would just take down and rotate on these particular banners as the program fills out. As they do it in Worth, you know, depending on the location, which obviously Harlem would be a good area to do it. And then what happens too is whoever the, the particular soldier is that's at a location, that's available as well. It can be a sheet, or you can build just a general database and somebody will say, you know, where's my, my, you know, my husband, John Smith? He's on 125th and Harlem, and we have all the specifics. So great program to attract people to the city. Already Palis Heights has all the, you know, restaurants and businesses on Harlem, but it's just another great opportunity to promote, you know, the town and patriotism, so.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your time. All right.
Thank you.
Under the consent calendar, I've got two items, motion to approve the minutes of the, let's see, May 7th, 2024 meeting, and the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the time ending on May 17th, 2024.
So.
Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Violet, discussion, roll call.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
All right, we have two, actually two special, or two open sealed bids tonight. The first one is the Cypress Lane Water Main Project.
And this one is coming from Aries Inc. And then, I don't know if I should say it. This is from Rico Construction Corp. 10% fund amount. Those are the only two.
Need a motion to refer those to water and sewer? Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The post, motion carries. Next one is the pool.
Shaftkees Brothers Inc. Base bid amount is $2,530,000. Sorry, $2,530,000. Second one is from Lob Construction. Third one, Simpson Construction Company. $1,855,000. Stuckey Construction Company. $1,907,000. CI Construction Inc. $2,389,000. And that was all.
All right, need a motion to refer that to recreation? Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right, that moves on. Let's see, under my report, just remember, Monday is Memorial Day. At 11 o'clock at City Hall out here, we have our annual Memorial Day program. So if you're free, please come out and, and honor the, those that have fallen over the years in different conflicts. So please, please do that. City clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
City treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the treasurer's report for the month ending April 30th, 2024. General fund began April with $5,238,174. Revenues for the month in the general fund were $909,544. Expenses, $892,475. Other source use, $1,389. Giving an ending cash balance in the general fund of $5,256,632. The total of all city funds began April with $30,636,977. Revenues were $1,661,585. Expenses totaled $1,677,182. Other source use, $42,446. Giving an ending cash balance in all city funds of $30,663,826. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
With that, entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Move by Alderman Violet, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any, oh, sorry, city attorney?
No report.
All right, communications, anyone have? Citizen wishing to address the council tonight? Name and address, please.
My name's Rock Schumake. I live in Palis Hills. Do you want the actual home address?
Yeah.
10426 South 75th Avenue, Palos Hills, 60465. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I have a mission going for myself this summer. I've had a power washing business for the last 20 years, and it was commercial business. And now I'm into the residential business of power washing, pressure washing sidewalks, driveways, anything outside of a home or a business. But what's different is this year, the guys who are doing the labor are guys that are staying at the center. They're rehabbing from alcohol abuse. And they've been in there for a while, and they're clean and they're sober. They're strong because they work them as farmhands while they stay at the center there. And since the season started a little over a month ago, I've been able to work, you know, have these guys do all my labor. And they're banking that money. And what I like about that is because a lot of times when they finish their rehab and they're clean and sober, and then they go back out onto the street, they're broke. And I could change that by giving these young guys power washing work. And I've been doing that. I pay them well, they're banking their money. And they have a lot better chance of maintaining sobriety when they come out of the program. If they have some money and can get an apartment, or get means to get to work, or, you know, whatever it is. And if they don't have money, they might be going back to the environment that they came from, where the trouble started. So that's the mission that I'm on this summer. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk here and try and get word out of helping these young men to maintain sobriety. And, and I think it's a win-win because my customers are always happy because we do good work. The job's not over until they say that they're satisfied that we did what we were supposed to do. So we clean everything outside. We have high, high-pressure water. We use biodegradable soaps. We could turn what's filthy, dirty into nice and clean. And whether it's a patio, a front porch, a deck in the back, driveways, we parwash anything outside. So again, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. Is it okay if I leave you some marketing information? And I appreciate it.
Thanks for your mission.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other citizens?
Thanks.
I'll just kind of go this way if you don't mind.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Mazin Barkat. The address is 1230, 12330 South Harlem Avenue, Suite B. As all you know, it was used to be United Trust Bank. We took over that spot, and we tried to do it as Height Magazine office. Obviously, we worked with several people around us, and it did not work well. So we are going now to do it as retail as it used to be. As far as I remember, it used to be Mona Lisa. So we're going to do it the same way. We put on a new application about two weeks ago. And I called the office, and I was in the office today as well, to ask the procedure. It did not get nowhere technically. So I don't know what's the procedure now. I put the application, I'm waiting on what's going on.
Well, just so you know, Dr., Ken Bussey has been off for two weeks on medical leave. He came back today.
Oh, okay.
So I'm sure you're going to call, I'll make sure you get a call tomorrow.
Oh, okay, no, no problem. I just figured I'd address that because.
It's fine, yeah, he's got back in the office today, so.
Because we met with you, I remember we met with you before we moved in here, and we talked about a few things. I'm the founder of Height Magazine. We did a lot of good work in the southwest suburbs. Many of, they know, many they don't, probably. We helped, as you know, Palis Township area when they had that issue a few years ago. We get involved and we solved their problem. As well, we had some issue with Oaklawn as well. An officer picked up a 17-year-old kid from the community, and they fumed over it. They thought it was more or less, you know, like discrimination. So we get involved and we stopped it. So we said, this is not discrimination. He's supposed to follow order, and that was his mistake. So we technically helped the community in every aspect. And probably you were in, in Mayor Kenneth Bennett event. I didn't have a chance to say hi to you.
Very good.
And I, I remember that he said that they increased sales about 25% in the past year. So that's because of our efforts in the community and every, every other community as well. So hopefully, we can be big assets for you guys here as well.
I'll make sure you get a call back tomorrow.
I appreciate that.
You've been gone.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name again?
Mazin, Dr. Mazin Barkat. I'm D by profession, but I stopped. I'm doing medical consulting now. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, sir. All right, anybody else on this side wants to speak? All right.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Wickston. I live at 12642 Navajo Court East. My wife and I moved here, I want to say 13 years ago. And one of the reasons we moved to Palis Heights was because of the green space. And, you know, we noticed your, your seal for the town is a tree on there. And we're understanding that you want to tear down the tree that's in our cul-de-sac and pave it over and make it a, you know, just all pavement. And all the neighbors that are around there are opposed to that. I mean, it's been there for 58 years. My neighbor across the street, she's lived there, Mrs. Eevee, I have emails to you, Jeffrey, as well, and to the mayor, that individuals have lived there for 58 years and it's never been a problem. And when we see that you're going to tear down a tree that's been there for 40 years and pave over grass that's been there for just as long, which will cause drainage problems, other things as well. And now let's mention the cost of $40,000, we were told that it's going to cost for each one. We feel like it's a waste of money for the city to be doing something unnecessary and needless. And then it's going to make our front yard even worse for people who come down our road thinking they're going out onto Navajo, and they're going to do a donut, which right now they can't do because of that green space. And we know people who live on the cul-de-sac who have all asphalt. That's all that happens. People whizzing and out there as fast as possible. We have at least 40 cars a day that come through there because they think they're coming down Navajo, but they're not. So we're opposed to that. You have the email that we sent to you as well, that we think it's a waste of money for the city, and we'd like it to stop.
Thank you, sir. The other, sorry.
I'm with him. My name is Nancy Wickston, same address. So, yeah, one of our neighbors had told us that this plan had been put in place. And the green space is just a circle right in the middle of the cul-de-sac, but it's got a very large, beautiful tree and a fire hydrant. And I know that there was complaints of, you know, larger trucks and landscape trucks apparently can't get through, but it hasn't been a problem for fire trucks or ambulances. One of our neighbor has ambulance and fire trucks frequently at her home. And I didn't know instead of if they had to shrink the green space a little bit, but still leave the beautiful tree and just bring that curb in a little bit, it would maybe save money and still not change the aesthetic of this cul-de-sac. So just something to think about on our end. That's what we've been seeing every day since we've lived here, and we've loved it. And again, the neighbors who have lived there much longer than we have. So I thank you for your time in letting me speak. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Callahan. I live at 12630 West Navajo Court. I have been there 24 years myself. Two years ago, Don Violet and I did talk about fixing the cul-de-sac because I believe ours is the worst one around. Yes, it is due to the trucks, the big trucks, the delivery trucks, the garbage trucks, the city plows. However, we have more cars, or I'm sorry, more houses in our cul-de-sac, and we have less space. All we asked for in the beginning, when Don and I talked, was to have the island shrunk a little bit, a few feet, so that these vehicles can get through. It's not the neighbors that are causing this. It is the bigger vehicles. However, I have watched my children enjoy playing around in that cul-de-sac. I have watched my neighbor's kids enjoy playing around in that cul-de-sac. One of my new neighbors is here. He has three beautiful daughters, and they are all running around it now also. And we don't want to get rid of the green space. Don, you and I have had extensive conversations about this. And basically, the only option that the city came down to was getting rid of all of these five cul-de-sacs that we have. It's not an option. We don't want it. We really don't want it. We want to keep the tree. We were also told that it was our responsibility to maintain the cul-de-sac, which was never told to any of us. I have one neighbor who's been there 60 years. And her husband, if he was still alive, he would also say, we were never told that. We have no problem maintaining that cul-de-sac. It's not a lot. I know my neighbor here, Andy, has cut it three times so far this year. Again, we do not want to get rid of that cul-de-sac. We just want it shrunk a little bit so the vehicles can get around. And we do want to be looking at the tree, and we do want to be looking at the beautiful bushes out there. And I do want to see the future kids having fun running around there and playing, and they're playing in it. We don't want to get rid of the green space. Okay?
Thanks, Ms. Callahan.
Sure, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. Susan Miller, lives at 12116 Cheyenne Drive in lovely Navajo. I represent the Navajo Homeowners Association. And a longtime member, a resident of Palis Heights. My family has lived in Navajo for 50 years. So we're quite familiar with the beauty of Navajo and the greening of Navajo. And I'm so glad that both representatives of the cul-de-sacs, both Navajo East and Navajo West, were here tonight to express their opinions of what they look at when they come out of their door every day and deal with the cul-de-sac itself. We like the greening of Navajo, and we hope that you guys reconsider other options besides putting up a parking lot. Like Joni Mitchell said back in 1970, we don't want a parking lot. We don't want asphalt. We want green space. And there are ways to enlarge that area so it can accommodate trucks, snow plows, a fire truck, an ambulance, whatever needs to be done. So we're just asking the aldermen that are involved in our community to reconsider, put it back to committee. Let's all work together and come up with some good solutions so we can appreciate where we live and live. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Miller. Anyone else?
My name is Andy Skiba. I live on the west cul-de-sac. Our cul-de-sac has a hydrant and a sewer cover that were required to be modified if that cul-de-sac to be removed. That's about five feet from the edge of the cul-de-sac. By making it smaller, we don't have to touch the hydrant or the sewer. So I'm sure it's going to save a lot of money making it smaller.
Sorry, can you say your name again?
Andy Skiba, S-K-I-B-A. 12635 South Navajo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else have any comments? All right, okay, if they came out of roads construction, we'll see where that goes. And I appreciate your comments tonight, and thank you from there. Thank you very much. All right, Finance Committee, Alderman McGrogan?
Mr. Mayor, we don't have anything this evening.
All right, Alderman Bassow, Public Safety?
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda this evening, but I would just like to mention that last week was a busy week for the police department. It was National Police Appreciation Week. And the police department was served up an appreciative lunch for all its members, and it was very well attended. And also on Saturday was Cop in a Rooftop at the Dunkin' Donuts, and all the Palis Police Departments participate in that. And that's a fundraiser for Special Olympics, and that was well attended also. And just want to say, summer vacation is here, and children will be out on all of those cul-de-sacs and all of those streets in numbers. So just take extra caution, especially at the intersections. Lot of traffic coming through very quickly on our side streets. I especially notice in, in all Palis. So that's the end of my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Municipal Grounds and Property, Alderman Begley?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening I have a motion that did not actually go to committee, but due to the temporal nature of it, I'm bringing it up tonight. I have a motion to approve seal coating for the community park and pool parking lot and drive with Seal Right Asphalt Maintenance in the amount of $9,500. And just to add to this, the parking lot will be closed from 7:00 a.m. on Wednesday, May 29th, until 10:00 p.m. until ten AM on Thursday, May thirtieth, weather permitting. And patrons can utilize the City Hall parking and PBO parking located just north of the baseball field during this time.
Okay. Alderman Begley makes the motion, second by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes. And Mayor, that's the end of my report this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Planning and zoning, Alderman McGovern.
No report this evening.
All right. Recreation, Alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to Williams Architect in the amount of forty-five thousand, five fifty-nine and fifty-one cents for construction document development, additional bid services, reimbursables, and unit billing items for Phase One of the pool project.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Violet. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye. And then I'd like to make a motion to approve annual payment to Time Clock Plus in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-two cents for administrative equipment and services for Parks and Recreation Department.
Second.
Move by Alderman Key, second by Alderman Begley. Discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes. And then I just encourage everyone to either go to the city website and follow the link to Parks and Rec or go to the Parks and Rec website on their own and check out all the activities. Lot of summer activities are starting up. We got concerts in the park coming up. We got movies in the park coming up. And so check out all the dates and come out with your whole family. And that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me. Roads and Construction, Alderman Clifford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve final payment to Lyndale Brothers for the 2023 MST program in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Begley. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Next motion to approve payment to Morris Engineering for engineering service various projects throughout the city in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
Move by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman Begley. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
And also, I noticed there was some confusion lately in this. Signature was on Harlem Avenue saying that this road would be closed, and it wasn't relating to Harlem Avenue, but the construction at one hundred and thirty-first and Southwest Highway and the closure of one hundred and thirty-first, Thirty-First Street West. So there will be detours, whether they... If you're traveling one hundred and thirty-first, like Seventy-sixth Avenue, it'll take you to one hundred and thirty-fifth, then over to Southwest or La Grange. You'll come around, come back to get around that Stormwater Culvert. So it's not Harlem Avenue, but one hundred and thirty-first, west of Seventy-sixth Avenue. And if you can possibly, I went through that today. Hundred and thirty-fifth Street is really backed up. It's a two-lane road, and it was backed up at three o'clock about blocking a good two blocks. So expect delays. It's just...
Pick your ultimate routes effectively, right?
Yeah. If you have the opportunity, actually sneak out to one hundred and fifty-first Street. You know, you take Southwest Highway or Route eighty-three here, one hundred and thirty-fifth, one hundred and forty-third to try to bypass. That's a little extra mileage, but it'll get you around those roadblocks.
That's it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can I ask Alderman Clifford a question? So the issue that the residents brought up about the cul-de-sacs, so that's part of the roads program for 2024, correct?
I believe so, yes. It's all included in there, right?
Yes. So it's not a separate item. It's folded into the roads program.
It's all blended in there.
So you're gonna re-discuss that at committee?
Right.
I just want to make that clear, that it is going back to committee, and they're discussing it.
I got an email. You know, I wasn't involved with the direct conversation with the residents over there, but when we found out about it, that's when it came to committee. We tossed it back and forth, and Public Engineer and engineers gave us the reasons why that happened over the last year and a half or so. So, but one of the emails that we answered from our Public Works was, "Thank you for your email and input on the cul-de-sac islands. Over the past several years, the city of Palis Heights addresses a significant amount of complaints regarding the maintenance of landscaped islands in the five cul-de-sacs located in Navajo Hills West Gate subdivisions. With an increased package deliveries and growth of the size of vehicles, the islands and cul-de-sacs are routinely damaged. In addition to Public Works, maintenance vehicles also grew in size, and it's difficult for us to clear the snow in these cul-de-sacs without plowing in a driver or damaging an island. These issues were discussed in detail at public roads and construction meetings over the past two years, and several maintenance options were debated. The city maintains over twenty cul-de-sacs, which we made decisions to make the cul-de-sacs uniform and remove the islands and proceed with the road surfacing program. We anticipate to hold a pre-construction meeting with the contractor shortly, and you will be notified when the road will be resurfaced. Please note that the Public Works will also relocate the hydrant and the island and clear the area for painting." Now, that was from our Public Works director, Mr. Christopher. That was the relay. So, but I guess I'd ask, I see our Public Works director, if he could explain this in full and what our options are coming forward on this? Because what I understand now, it's going to a pre-construction meeting, and that could cause difficulties. Could you maybe...
You want to do it at committee, or you want to do it in...
Well, I was gonna ask Adam or some attorney or some legal things about what it...
Okay.
Well, going by what... What he told me that the reason...
Is there an option?
Take it back, committee.
Of course. So just to complement what Alderman Clifford said about the roads program and these cul-de-sacs, this issue was not brought up recently. This issue was brought up several years ago. And Public Works received numerous complaints and calls about rut marks in those islands. And even if you look at Google Earth and you look at Street View, even in 2012, you can see tire marks roughly about three to four feet away from the curb line. And we looked at that situation. We monitored. We went on garbage days to see exactly what's happening, and depending on the placement of a garbage can or vehicle park or the garbage man trying to pass a vehicle or a delivery truck trying to pass a vehicle. And I even took several aldermen, and we witnessed firsthand exactly what's happening in the traffic pattern in the cul-de-sac. And we brought up several options about potentially shrinking the size of this cul-de-sac, shrinking the island, and trying to increase the surface area there. But that, though, those items were debated. Pros and cons were debated in the Roads and Construction meeting, and we decided that if we do have budget, to put this type of work as an option in the road program. So when we bid the road program, it would be option, whether we can do it or not, depending on our budget. And last year, with the cost of the road resurfacing program, that option was eliminated. This year, we have enough funds available to complete the work. And we are also fully redoing the cul-de-sac on East Navajo Court due to the poor condition of it. So when we're doing this, we're also removing the island tree, and we ourselves are gonna remove the fire hydrant from that area. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for this Wednesday with a contractor, and we already have the materials purchased to relocate the hydrant, and we have locates called out. We have locations selected for the fire hydrants. So we are looking to move forward with this project with all the materials on hand. We're just looking, now we receive some more help so we can free up our Public Works crews from mowing the lawn into working on water. So we're pretty much set. If we move this to the Roads and Construction, it's fine. We can potentially delay the commitments of the program, but we can discuss that at the Roads and Construction Committee a little bit further.
Okay. Thank you, sir. License, permission, franchises, Alderman Lewandowski.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, a step in for Alderman Lewandowski. I think I may have called the alderman. We express our condolences on the passing of his father. And I'm sure that's why he's not in attendance. So on number fourteen, we have a motion to approve a variance for an existing residential driveway located at one hundred and ten Augusta Drive to be widened slightly more than code allows.
Move by Alderman McGrogan, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Begley. Discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Number fifteen on the agenda is a motion to approve a variance for a metal wall sign lettering larger than our current code allows at 12150 Harlem, which is a eye doctor's clinic.
Move by Alderman McGrogan, is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to mention these, both these items actually passed unanimously at prior meetings.
Great. Rule call, please.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Right, thank you. Alderman Violet, Water and Sewer.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to announce that next week's Water and Sewer meeting will be postponed.
Okay, great. All right, that's it? Business and Economic Development, Alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report.
Mr. McGovern?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Any old business?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to be, because after our Public Works Director came up, I just want to make this clear to the residents that are here. There can be a pre-construction meeting about the roads program, but no work is gonna be done on any of those cul-de-sacs until after your committee rediscusses it, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make that crystal clear. Thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
Mr. Mayor, on that same point, it sounds to me, and I'm not that familiar with this issue, but if the garbage trucks, and Adam, you made a comment, is the main culprit, or is there a possibility if, to ask these scavenger services to use maybe smaller trucks on a particular section of the route? I don't know if there's, if it's more than that, but...
I don't think that's practical, no. Just because you're gonna have one truck through the whole quadrant of the town or...
Because I know in some cities I've seen where they have like a smaller version of a garbage truck.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I think it is more that they don't care. I don't think the delivery trucks care. I don't think our mail delivery. I went to Worth, I first went to our mail service because we have a new mailman the last six months because Berlin retired. So now they're running over everyone's grass in our neighborhood. And we, I mean, we have a subdivision, and so it's private property, so we're repairing the grass, and then they do it the next week. And so I went to our, I went to our post office first, and then they directed me to Worth. So I went there and filed a complaint with the delivery supervisor because frankly, they don't care. And I think, you know, we've seen, because a lot of streets on the curves and in our subdivision, we're basically, my subdivision is a big circle with two courts. And so there's a lot of curves. And it's like, well, when we approached and said, hey, what's going on with the, you know, going over the grass? Well, it's hard for me to reach the mailbox. And it's like, well, tough. I mean, can you imagine if we have to do two-hundred-and-twenty-two mailbox grass, you know, we have to repair that? I think it's more that. It's just they don't care.
Maybe, you know, I mean, it's, it sounds like, I mean, it's a disruptive, disruptive problem for not only the residents, but it's also possibly costing the city money. Like, maybe, maybe we could put some restrictions on to limit the load limit, which would then force the, these different vendors, or give them tickets if they decide to ignore those warnings, to say you can only have like a one-ton truck or some... You know, in other words, you wouldn't be able to handle some of these big trucks that come through the neighborhood, to kind of control it. Because, I mean, you know, we've all seen signs where it says like local traffic only, or, you know, like I had, years ago, I had, we had so much traffic over by Palis South, and they were using some of the different side streets to cut through big trucks and stuff that were delivering, the semis bringing books and desks and stuff. We passed in this room an ordinance that said, you know, you can only have like X number of tons on the trucks, which actually was great because it eliminated all the school buses that used to cut through there and avoid all the different traffic signs. And so maybe there's something like that, that the committee that this comes through could look into. I'm just trying to brainstorm, so maybe the residents can get some kind of a solution.
Well, the next roads, I mean, we'll go over all these suggestions and things that... You just gotta remember what, like Alderman Key said, that problem of running off the road is citywide. It could be over by the culverts. It could be in Old Town. Some of it's worse than Old Town.
Actually, any intersections like that.
There's not enough room in the streets, like Sixty-eighth Avenue, that's a narrow street in Palis Heights. It's sixteen feet wide. A lot of people, they try to get over. I don't know how many times I could say we replaced some of the culverts over, especially between Winter and whatever, but we'll look at that and see if there's any feasibility of resolving the problem.
All right, thanks, sir. Any old business? Citizens wishing to ask any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so in the last twelve minutes, there's been eleven cars that come through our cul-de-sac because they don't know it's a dead end, and I think that's the big problem. I know we have that little sign that says, "No outlet", but I've seen some other cul-de-sacs that have like, you know, dead end, you know, no outlet, bigger ones. And I think that's the problem. The garbage truck guys drive perfectly, so do the plow truck guys. They're not damaging our cul-de-sac. I know yours is a little bit narrower. The ones that are damaging it are tree service companies who are not related to the village, who are just thinking they're going out on the Navajo, and they're not. And they're like, gosh crap, and they're coming around the edge. That's the people, the Amazon people, and then just like Alderman Key said, we're having the same problem with the post office woman. She's driving on our lawn, which is outside the cul-de-sac because she doesn't want to get out of her truck. So we had to put those little sticker, those little spikes that you do for when plow trucks come through so that she would stop and driving on it. So it's not the people that live here. It's not the Public Works. They do a great job. It's the outsiders who don't know where they're going.
Maybe viable alternative, at least, maybe not a solution, but at least something to stop a part of it, so. Okay, anyone else? Any new business? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Alderman Key, for clarifying several of the issues. I just have a question, and maybe it's roads.